I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the September 3 Durango City Council Meeting. Happy to have all of you guys here. Thank you for joining us. I hope everyone is well aware now that we have taken the oath here on City Council, the "Sibility First" pledge program enacted by the Durango Community Relations Commission. And so far, they have 55 businesses that have signed up and 79 individuals. And so I want to really encourage everyone to go ahead and go to the website and take the oath. It is how we, as a council, are really working to promote sibility and respect. You can go to durangogob.org and search for the "Sibility First" pledge program. With that, if you'd like to join us tonight during public participation, if you could please join us on the sign-up sheets below. And Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Here.
Mayor Youssef?
Here. Do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest this evening, councilors? Seeing none, I'll move on to presentations and proclamations, which we have none of. So we will move on to the review of the consent agenda. This is intended, this part of the agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve items that are considered routine or non-controversial. We will have no separate discussion of items on this part of the agenda unless the counselor requests that an item be removed for the agenda. Ms. Phillips, will you please read our consent agenda items?
Certainly. Items 5.1 and 5.2 are approval of minutes. 5.1, the minutes from the special study session on August 6, 2019. 5.2, the minutes from the City Council meeting of August 6, 2019. Items 5.3 through 5.5 are discussion and possible action items. 5.3 concerns Resolution R. 2019-33, adopting the performance evaluation process for the municipal judge. 5.4 concerns Resolution R. 2019-34, adopting the performance evaluation process for the city attorney. 5.5 concerns approval of the Colorado Federal Lands Access Program Agreement for the Lake Nighthorse Access Project and Resolution R. 2019-35, authorizing an additional appropriation to the 2015 Half-Cent Tax Fund and to the Capital Projects Fund. Items 5.6 through 5.8 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of September 17, 2019. 5.6 is to review and consider adoption of impact fees related to fire protection, rescue, and emergency services under CRS 29-20104.5, including consideration of the DFPD impact fee study, an intergovernmental agreement, and an ordinance to impose impact fees. 5.7 is to consider sewer rate amendments, and 5.8 is to consider water rate amendments.
Thank you. Do we have any council that would like to remove an agenda item tonight from the consent agenda? Okay. Well, I'm going to remove items 5.3 and 5.4. And so with that, can I have a motion from council to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
I would move to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
And I was requested that those, 5.3 and 5.4 would be pulled just because I wanted to first recognize Counselor Baxter and thank her for all of her efforts in compiling all of these spreadsheets and data for us. Thank you so much. A lot of work, I know, and really appreciate your efforts on that. And I also wanted to recognize council for their hard work in creating this program and these assessments and putting them together. I think it shows some really good forward momentum on the part of council in establishing clear and concise goals and objectives going forward for our appointees and expectations. And I think it's really great progress, and I just wanted to take a moment off of the consent agenda just to really appreciate some good work done. So the other thing I wanted to talk about on this is that we do want to talk about next steps. We talked about, you know, going forward and piloting this program for the city attorney and the municipal judge, and I don't want to lose that conversation, so we will talk about that some more next week.
Excellent.
All right? And so that's really all. I just wanted to acknowledge council and Counselor Baxter. So with that, can we have a motion for that, please?
Make a motion to approve 5.3 and 5.4. Second.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to public participation, this part of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions for items that are not otherwise on the agenda. I want to call you forward. If you please join us at the dais, state your name and address clearly for the record. We are limiting comments to three minutes, and at two and a half minutes, our city manager will kindly wave his hand to warn you that your time is almost up. We don't mean to be distracting, but we are trying to run efficient meetings, and we have a full agenda, so thank you for working with us on that. And with that, I will call up Suzanne Parker, please.
Good evening. Again, my name is Suzanne Parker, and I live at 403 Trimble Crossing Drive, so in the county, not in the city. I have three brief points I'd like to address to you all tonight, and first has to do with Ron LeBlanc's leaving his position as city manager. For six years in the past, as the chairperson for the Durango Heritage Celebration, I dealt with Ron frequently in a professional capacity, and in that time, I never found him to be anything but conscientious, show a great deal of integrity and fairness in what he did. I always didn't get what I wanted, but he was still fair, in my opinion. And that carried over into his staff members' dealings with me as well. My second point relates to the City Council seeming encouragement of anonymous concerns. It's a curious element of the human psyche that we often put more energy into negative comments than in positive ones. And I feel that you need to give credence primarily to those who are willing to state the courage of their convictions by putting their name to their comments. Otherwise, I think what you get may be skewed in the direction of negativity. And finally, and I address this to the mayor and the two newest council members, Madam Mayor, you were quoted in the Herald as saying that change is healthy. With respect, I disagree with that terminology. Change is, in and of itself, simply something different. It isn't healthy or unhealthy. It isn't positive, and it isn't negative. I would strongly encourage you and the council members who vehemently advocate for change not to be seduced by your temporary positions of power and to be cautious about denigrating the past work of the city manager, his staff, and previous council members just because you're able to do that. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Ron, I wish you the best in the future. Your leaving will be a real blow to this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. We are moving on now. That was our only public participation this evening, moving on to quasi-judicial hearings. We have one quasi-judicial hearing tonight. Please note that this is an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input into the City Council's decision-making process. It's intentionally organized to ensure transparency and fairness to all parties involved. We welcome all public testimony for our public hearings. I do request that it be relevant to the issue at hand. We are limiting comments to three minutes. Item 9.2.1 is a quasi-judicial hearing, which is a continued public hearing to consider a request from Animus River Ventures LLC for rezone and conceptual development plan approval for the Animus River Commercial Center Development. We will have the structure of this hearing tonight. We will have the staff report. I will officially open the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from the applicant or developer. I'll close the public testimony. We'll have questions from council, and hear back again from staff and/or the applicant or developer. With that, Mr. Shine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Shine from Community Development, and the request before you tonight is, in many respects, a pretty straightforward commercial development proposal. But in the one respect where it's not, that has caused a lot of discussion and a lot of need for our staff to work between the applicant and adjacent landowner to look for a creative solution to that one sticking point that I'll talk to you more about. So we've been working, like I said, with the property owners and their representatives for many months now, and been in communication with the adjacent property owner and the property owner who has an interest in an easement over the property we're going to talk about. And really, our goal has been to try to preserve the city's long-term interests, the city and CDOT, while also facilitating appropriate development of the parcel and accommodating the adjacent landowners' concerns. So you'll hear a lot more about that as I go through the presentation. I'd like to first pass around an updated exhibit. It's a site plan that wasn't in your packet, but it's a revised layout. I have some slides on it as well, but just so you have it in front of you, I'll pass it around now. So it's a two-part request tonight. It's a rezone and a conceptual development plan. A conceptual development plan is the first step in a plan development. So there are multiple steps after this. They would need to come back for a preliminary development plan, and then prior to construction activity, a site plan review or a final plan. Those are the three steps of the plan development process. It's a six-acre property just east of the highway and directly north of the Durango Mall property. The proposal is to create three developable commercial or mixed-use lots, and then three tracks, one of which would be dedicated to the city in the near future, and then two would be commonly-owned features for the foreseeable future. The developer is also going to be responsible for installing the initial infrastructure to service the lots that are being created. So this gives you a sense of location of the property. As I said, just east of the highway, right near the intersection of Sawyer and the highway. We'll talk more about that as well. This just gives you a better perspective on it, adjacent to the river. You can see the river trail currently runs through the eastern portion of the property, and the city has obtained easements for that. But this development would give us an opportunity to own some riverfront property and the trail corridor there, so there's a benefit in that regard. So I'll just give you a little preview, and then we'll come back to this issue later. But really, a lot of people who would access the mall or access the frontage road would refer to this as the Sawyer Drive intersection with the highway, but that's not totally accurate. The access into the mall is located, or runs through this property, and it's a private easement. It's not public right-of-way. And this easement was dedicated to the owners of the mall property by a previous owner of the subject property that we're looking at. And it has terms and conditions around use of that easement, and that really is what is causing a little bit of disagreement, the terms of that easement, and then what we've been trying to accommodate in our review of this project. So again, we'll come back to that, but that just gives you a quick visual of the extent of the access easement that the mall owners have an interest in to provide access to their So in regards to the rezone, which is sort of the first request, staff finds that this is pretty non-problematic. Right now, it's zone commercial regional. They're requesting a PD or a planned development zone, which is intended to facilitate sort of a unique layout of lots or a different development concept then can be accommodated by the straight zoning. So this is how the zoning map would change. You can see it's adjacent to another parcel that's zone plan development, so it's contiguous to another zone or the same zone, which is something we look for under rezone requests. And then, like I said, this would just initiate that three-step process for a plan development, conceptual, preliminary, and final. In regards to the conceptual plan and the layout that's being proposed, I've done a lot of research on the history of the property, and I thought this exhibit from back in 1991, when the mall was developed or contemplated at that time, there was a conceptual master plan for the entire area. So now where Mercury Village is, the mall property, this property we're talking about, the frontage road, all of that had sort of a conceptual master plan laid out. And the main thing I want to draw your attention to is at that time, there was contemplated and agreed to by everybody involved in the master planning process, this idea of what we call a jug handle to the frontage road. So right now, that red line is the frontage road. It's just a straight connection across, and it goes into Sawyer Drive. The green dashed line is sort of the preferred alternative, and that's what we've been trying to get to through this review process and what we'll make some steps towards as part of this development. And won't get completely there, but a good portion of the way there. So as I said, this has been discussed, and CDOT and the city are all in agreement that for a variety of reasons, circulation, safety, connectivity, this jug handle design is really the preferred way to realign that frontage road. So this is the site plan that I just handed out. There was a previous version of the site plan that looked a little bit different. That was a part of the planning commission's conversations and review, but I think it's appropriate now since planning commissions reviewed it. They're recommending approval based on this site layout, that we sort of focus our time on this layout. So you can see here how the lots are laid out. As I mentioned, at the rear, a tract is being proposed to be dedicated to the city for open space and a trail connection. There's a large water quality feature proposed to handle stormwater and make sure the water that is, that runs off from this development is treated before it hits the river, another positive aspect of the development. You can see the three lots as they're laid out, and then the proposed roadway connection shows that jug handle design and shows what is currently the easement being dedicated as public right-of-way. So that would become a public street. The frontage road would be a CDOT-owned frontage road, and they would maintain it. And I don't know if you can see in my parentheses, that would be dedicated as roadway eventually. And that's based on those negotiations and conversations with the adjacent property owner who is contending, and I'll let their representative speak a little bit more to this, contending and saying that opening that road connection and dedicating that as public right-of-way without the agreement of the mall owners violates the terms of the easements, of the easement that they have obtained from the property owner. There is disagreement in that language. It's not been our role to adjudicate that or to put on the gown and make that decision. That's a civil matter between those two parties, but at this point, we think we've found a way to, like I said, get close to where we all want to be, city, CDOT, and the developers of this property. The scenario that we're proposing and that we believe we have agreement from by both parties is that upon approval of this plan development, they would build the new frontage road to a CDOT standard, and they would create that lot as a privately-owned common element of the development. So similar to an HOA common element or a commercial property owner's common element, it would be privately owned and maintained until such time as the city exercised a dedication of right-of-way, and then it could be converted into a public roadway. And that would require consent of the mall owners to do that because of the interest that they hold in the easement. So I'll kind of pause there. If there's any questions at this point, I can take them, but it's a little bit complicated. But that's the scenario we're proposing, and like I said, I think we have agreement on that. The other aspect of that is through traffic, the roadway would not be open to through traffic right when it was built. The easement contains language about access from off-site parties through the property to use that easement, and so a gate would be installed. It would allow emergency access, but it would not allow public through traffic through the site to the mall entrance road. The existing frontage road would remain as it is until such time as that was dedicated as a public roadway, and then CDOT anticipates they'd abandon that frontage road and then take on maintenance and responsibility for the jug handle. This is just a clean copy of the site plan. Again, we would look at that roadway. It would be designed, constructed, just like a public roadway at this point, with the deferred dedication until agreement by both parties on the dedication to CDOT. So for the rezone, the LEDC has some review criteria that we look at and make sure the proposal's in conformance with these criteria. Based on our review and then based on planning commission's review, we find that the rezone request meets these criteria. And then the conceptual development plan also has a number of items that the Land Use and Development Code spells out that we look for, compatibility with the surrounding area, adequate public services, natural resource protection, and energy efficiency, things like that. Based on our review and again, planning commission's review in June, they find that the proposed layout of the conceptual development plan meets these criteria. We did get a public comment from the Durango Mall's legal council, sort of explaining a lot of those issues that I just tried to clarify for you all, and he's in attendance tonight, so if you have questions for him, you can ask him. And then we had one additional comment from a property owner further down the frontage road, expressing concerns about changes that would limit access, specifically traffic heading north on the frontage road to access his property. The Durango Mall's legal council, a lot of their concerns were about traffic generation, and so we have reached out to CDOT. They've provided some initial response to those comments, and one of the conditions of approval that we're suggesting is an access permit from CDOT needs to be obtained prior to this next step that the project would need to go through. That requires a very detailed review by CDOT. They would vet any concerns they have, make sure the design meets their standards, and that would need to be provided prior to that next review, which for preliminary plans goes to planning commission and City Council. So we feel like that's an adequate way to cover those concerns about traffic generation and making sure CDOT is on board with the design and the layout. So as I mentioned, staff finds that the proposal meets the applicable criteria, subject to the conditions that I'll go over here in a minute. Planning commission held a public hearing using that revised layout that I handed out and is recommending approval, again, with the conditions that I'll go over here briefly. So like I said, the first condition is evidence of an approved CDOT access permit prior to submittal of a preliminary plan. The preliminary development plan usually contains a lot more details about utilities, engineering of the site, grading and drainage, and we also want to see some preliminary building designs and then some design guidelines governing the development of the buildings in the future as part of that preliminary development plan submittal. We're proposing to apply the dimensional standards, so setbacks, building height, those types of things, from our commercial general zone, which you saw was, the majority of those properties in the area were that CG zone. And then these three are really related to that frontage road and, like I said, the negotiations and the outcomes there. So the condition is that the realigned frontage road would be designed and constructed to meet CDOT and city specs, but will be privately owned and maintained until accepted as a public facility. They would have to set up an owners association to cover the cost of that, snow removal, any other maintenance that would need to be done on that roadway. Another condition is that we'll write up and offer to dedicate that public right-of-way with specific terms and conditions on how the city can act on that dedication of public right-of-way and have that specified and hopefully agreed to between all parties before the preliminary plan review. And then, until such time as the right-of-way is dedicated, an emergency access gate acceptable to DFPD to allow emergency access but to limit access to the traveling public shall be installed and secured at all times to prevent traveling public from traveling through the site from the existing frontage road. The location of that, too, I just wanted to point out, it's shown on there, sort of in the middle. I think our preference is to have it closer to the frontage road. We can use this interim time between the conceptual and preliminary plan to pin down the exact location of that gate. Tract B, which is the one on the eastern side of the property, will be dedicated to the city of Durango for open space and trail purposes. And then detailed improvement plan shall be provided as part of the preliminary plan submittal. That's a pretty standard condition, and there's a few others that are really standard language that we use for all PDs or subdivisions, so I didn't list those, but they're in the staff report if you want to reference those. So those are the conditions of approval. The red text here is how that condition was slightly modified at the planning commission meeting, but planning commission, like I said, is recommending approval with those conditions, and this is the recommended action for tonight. Happy to take questions or try and clarify things, and then the applicants are here.
Great. Okay. We're going to start, before we have questions from council, with officially open the public hearing. Do we have a presentation from the applicant or the developer?
Hi, my name is Steve Pavlik. I'm with Set Engineering at 150 Rock Point Drive. We're the civil engineering consultant on the project. Don't really have a formal presentation, as usual. Scott did an excellent job going through all the background. I personally have been involved in this tract of land probably for about 10 years. I'd say this is the third or fourth attempt at some sort of agreement between the city and the neighbor and my client at working something out. It was a lot of meetings with Mr. Ellers, the Durango Mall's attorney, some Durango Mall clients or owners directly, and city staff as well over the years, but I think we're finally at a point where hopefully everyone's happy with the, generally happy with the configuration. I also wanted to say that as far as the traffic goes in CDOT, we have been in conversation with CDOT, and I do have an email here, just one line out of there. They said if a new permit is needed for the Sawyer Drive S-160 intersection, it is unlikely that significant changes, improvements, if any, to the intersection will be required by CDOT. And I'll add to that, I believe in conversations with them, that's because there's not much more that can actually be done, reasonably done to that intersection. It's already, I'm sure you all know, driving through there, it's as wide as it could possibly be, and there's just not a practical way to improve it at this point. And additionally, their track A is just about the last parcel that, if vacant parcel that can develop, that would have access to that location. So yeah, we're here for questions, but I don't have really a formal presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Hold on.
Madam Mayor, I think I need to recuse myself. I have a shared client with Mr. Ellers, and it's historic, but nonetheless, in this environment of optics, I think it's best if I recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Do we have any public testimony tonight? Mr. Blanc?
Hi. I'm just here over at the county office.
Okay. And?
We need to start. We don't have any.
No, no public. Mr. Ellers, if you'd like to join us. Mr. Ellis, if you'd like to join us.
Thank you.
Mayor Youssef, members of the city council, my pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Denny Ellers. My office is at 679 East Second Avenue, Suite C, just down the street. I'm appearing this evening as attorney for Durango Mall LLC and Outlandish LLC. They are the owners of the four parcels in the Durango Mall subdivision. I'd like to say we're grateful for the efforts of staff, particularly Dirk Nelson and Kevin Hall and especially Scott Shine, for the thorough review and their efforts to reasonably communicate with us, to understand our points of view and our issues with the application. One clarification I'd like to make, I think Scott said that this conceptual master plan for Durango Mall and surrounding area in September 1991 was about the time that the mall was developed, and actually the mall was, subdivision was approved in 1981, I believe, and then constructed in '82, '83. And I don't, I frankly don't know who commissioned that plan or where it came from, but I don't believe that at least the current owners of the mall participated in that or signed off on it. So I just, it is what it is, whatever that master plan is or whoever did it. I think he spoke accurately about what it shows. And he clarified that the conceptual development plan, I think that was passed out, it's the one bearing the date of June 18th, 2019, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And that's what was presented at Planning Commission, so I just want to be sure. I would like to clarify and state for the record that my client's position is that the conditions five and six that Scott spoke about in the recommendations, the staff recommendations, my client's position will be that terms and conditions to remove those emergency gates or to dedicate to the public, the Durango Mall driveway and the access easement would require the consent of the owners of the properties benefited, and that's those four parcels there at the Durango Mall. The Durango Mall, and there's three out parcels, and there, those four parcels. And finally, we just reserve the right to object to the engineering details of the site design and the access and engineering that relates to that, so that when we see those things at preliminary plan, that we have the right to object to those at this time. I know that in the conceptual development plan that's before you, it shows a left turn pocket and some other things, but I recognize that's only conceptual in nature, so we'll reserve our objections to any of that to the time of preliminary plan. But other than that, we don't have any other comments. I'm happy to attempt to answer questions.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to officially close the public testimony now. If we could have questions from council.
Yeah, I was wondering, Scott, perhaps maybe your best to do this, if you could just cursor us through how the access actually works with the plan and the gate intact?
Yeah.
And I'm particularly interested in how it works going north along the frontage road to get into the new applicant's parcel.
So, as you know, there's some recent improvements there. There's a median that runs past the left into the frontage road there. So what has been happening a lot is people will turn in here, they'll U-turn around that median and then head north on that frontage road that exists. Under this proposal, they'd be able to turn into the property and access any of this part of the development, but could not continue through. That's the gate there. So they could, you know, I don't know, I'll check on the legality of the U-turn and we'll hash that out with CDOT, but that would be the way, it would be the same movement or the same restrictions as are in place now. It wouldn't be improving that access to go north, but it wouldn't change it from what it is right now. If you're coming south on the frontage road, you could pass this development and still access the highway, or you could turn in and access these two lots from this development, but not connect through. Does that help?
It helps, thanks.
Sure, if you were coming south on the frontage road, other than turning in early for that north part, you wouldn't be able to access the southern part of that development if you were coming south. You'd have to find another way to get in there.
This lot here, yeah. And you can't access the mall either coming south on the frontage roads.
Right. And you couldn't do that as a pedestrian either, or could you walk through there, park and walk?
You could walk. There's, they're showing sidewalks. The, I think the terms of the easement are mainly related to vehicle traffic and the burden of vehicle traffic on the easement. You know, again, the goal is to have this be more of a full movement intersection instead of doing the U-turn and going north or coming south and not having access. Once this opens up, that solves and is the best condition in the long run. This is sort of that interim step to get there because of this legal issue.
I have a question. Is Scott, either for you or for the developers? I see all the commercial. I wondered if the developers had any interest or had considered a mixed use for this, since it would be going through rezoning? I don't know if it would be appropriate in that area, but given our housing inventory shortage, always looking at it, did the developers have any interest in that?
I can tell you what's shown on their plan, and then they could respond to the interest in that. So they showed 30,300 square feet of commercial space, retail primarily, and then 8,900 square feet of office space. No residential right now.
No residential.
If you want them to come up and speak to that.
I think that's their choice whether they...
So, I believe at one time, there may have been some interest, but at this point, they don't really have an interest in residential. I do know, and I don't want to put the words in Denny's mouth, but I do know the La Quinta on the opposite side of the mall attempted to do a handful of residential units, and I know the mall didn't want residential next to the mall, so that had come up before.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm really happy that it's come along this far. Thank you for all the time and effort that everybody's put into it and all the staff hours. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think to echo what we saw in the report at the Planning Commission, where all of the commissioners encouraged the representative of the mall and the mall themselves to hopefully look at the conditions of that intersection relative to traffic safety and everything else, the flow of it, and work, you know, hard toward a resolution that would be acceptable to the community at large and not just for the four parcel owners in there. I'd just like to reiterate that suggestion.
Great. Any further comment or questions from council? Comments, further comments from applicant or staff? Okay, I'll seek a decision from city council, please.
I'd move to approve the proposed Animus River Commercial Center rezone and conceptual development plan with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips, may we have her call?
Councilor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bettini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke? Sorry, my mistake. Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Thank you.
Can someone go get Mr. Broke? Thank you. Great, okay, with that, moving on to introduction of ordinances. Dirk, can I have you read this section for us, 11.1?
Yes, this is ordinance code 2019-20, an ordinance amending certain chapters and sections of the code of ordinances to amend the maximum penalties to be imposed by the municipal court for municipal code violations and declaring an effective date. If you want a quick explanation, again, this is really flows out of a change, a recent change in state law that reduces the maximum penalties, particularly jail time that can be imposed in municipal court. So what we're trying to do is align the code, our code, with the, those changed provisions of state law. When we started through that process, we discovered that there were some inconsistencies in certain sections of the code and in places in the code where throughout history, there have been some specific penalties imposed that didn't quite match these maximums. So part of this, the main impetus of this ordinance is to change the maximum penalties that may be imposed in municipal court to 364 days rather than a year, and a fine not to exceed $2,650 or both. And the secondary aspect of this ordinance makes those maximum penalties the same throughout the code. Again, I'll also point out that this is really just for convictions for adult offenses. The violations for minors, violations of the code by minors does not carry the possibility of any jail time.
Excellent. And you said we had an ordinance, what was the ordinance number again?
It was 2019-20.
Questions, comments from council or motion?
Make motion to approve ordinance number 2019-20.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Phillips, may we have her call?
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Councilor Bettini?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Moving on to council reports and actions. Counselors, anyone have something they'd like to share?
Yeah, I'll jump in there.
Great.
Mr. LeBlanc, last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, you surprised the council with your announcing your pending retirement, and we didn't have anything prepared for you at that time, and apologize for that without words, but I do want to thank you for your dozen years of service to the community of Durango. I think though we'll have much more to say, because we have a lot more time to work with you, I imagine, I just want to thank you now and honor your tenure that you've had here. I'd say dozens of city counselors can thank you for your leadership. Thousands of employees that have worked under you have benefited from your guidance and leadership, and tens of thousands of citizens and tourists and community members have benefited as well. I would expect, you know, as the debate goes on about city managers all over the country, that sometimes they make decisions that make people think, oh gosh, he's not on my side. But if he weren't doing that, I don't think he'd probably be doing this job. So on the whole, I think your tenure has been a really glowing success, and we are all so much the better for it. So looking forward to working with you towards your retirement and toward the successful conclusion of your tenure here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charles.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I had, I'll just report that we, I was gone last Thursday, went up to Frisco for the Colorado Association of Skeetown meeting. It was a successful meeting. I'm not prepared to talk about the presentations we had. Number of great presentations from the Colorado Director of Tourism and some folks over in Moab, and all talking about sustainability of the tourism industry. One of the things we did do, they took, they gave us, provided us pontoon boat trip, so I found myself on a pontoon boat with, out in the middle of Lake Dillon, with four current and former city managers, and they too had a resounding toast to Rumba Blank in his retirement. And I can say there was a certain amount of jealousy involved and a certain amount of drinking. But they all wished you well and look forward to seeing you at the next cast meeting as well, before your departure, whenever that might be. So I'll be, I'll have a short presentation of all the facts and the hard work that was done at that meeting. It was really quite informative and a great meeting, so thank you.
Great. So I'd like to say that tomorrow at 12:15 here, the third meeting of the Strategic Long-Term Finance Committee Working Title Group, the working group is meeting, and we're hoping it'll be our next to last and that after the next one, we can bring forward to city council. So we're very excited about that, and it's been very engaging. And Councilor Broke and Councilor Nisworthy and myself are on that committee.
Thank you.
And I'll add in that I've had some meetings with private citizens concerned about bears, both in their yards and in the being sighted, and I just want to remind everyone that the next two months are critical, where the bears are coming down into town to get fattened up for their hibernation, and there's a couple organizations you can be working with to help limit bear human interactions, both Bear Smart, Durango, FruitGlean.org, which will help you with your fruit, if you have excess fruit in your neighborhood, the Good Food Collective, and it's really important that trash be properly stored, that fruit be picked from the trees, and that bird seed be removed. So I just want to recognize that. And the other thing I'd like to encourage folks, when I spoke later this week, there were still a few tickets left for the local first dinner tonight, which is a big community celebration of local food and community. So I wanted to encourage folks to think about that as well.
Excellent. Okay, I have office hours next Monday, September 9th, 12 to 1:00 p.m. at the city managers' conference room, so if anyone wants direct access to a counselor for any reason, you're welcome to meet with me at this time. I did attend the Creative Economy Commission meeting at the end of last week, and artist Allison Lee Smith was in attendance to give us an update on the Common Threads project for the median of 55160. And she mentioned to us that the time that she has touched over 400 community residents through this public art project that she's putting together, most of those are students. She has had the panels on display, and you can also see them at, on her websites, which is DurangoCommonThreads.com. And, yeah, DurangoCommonThreads.com, and you can look at the various pictures that she used to incorporate into these panels, and it truly is public art and student art. It's really a wonderful thing to see. So they're, again, hoping to install that before year-end, and it's going to be really exciting for this community when that happens, I think. It's a great example of public art at its finest. And with that, we'll move into future potential agenda items. Anything, councilors? On for future?
I had made a request earlier this week, I think, if our minutes that we approved this month were from August 6th, and I don't know, it's a little difficult for me to go, we've had numerous meetings since then. I would, if we can, would prefer to see them early, as early as they're available. So just an idea, suggestion, a thought, if that's possible, so that we know for sure that that's exactly what we said, and we can approve them without being concerned about all the time in between. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, moving on to 14.1, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution adopting city council goals for 2019-2020. So we have in our packet the goals. Thank you to our staff for putting some color coding to our goals so we could see them easily, and they are getting more and more.
And catching typos?
Yes, and catching typos. We've come a long way. Any council discussion around these? We've had a lot, but any further discussion and conversation? As we all know, these goals are going to be influencing our time and energy, our budget, our actions. These, we, as council met, just to keep the community informed, for a full day retreat to establish these goals, bring them forward, bring them current. It is a big, a big, I feel like it's very good forward movement, and again, I really am, I want to acknowledge the hard work on the part of council in doing this, and I think it's great, great progress. I think we will continue to massage, and I think that these can, will continue to be wordsmithed as we go, but this is a very, very good point to bring them to discussion and possible resolution.
And I would like to say that in the couple of months since we first started this process and have now come to where we feel we can adopt these, we've actually made progress on several of them already, so that's really a good thing to hear.
Excellent. Well, I think it's really, really good work and if there's no further comments, I guess we are looking for a recommendation.
I'll move that we adopt the 2019-2020 city council goals.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Great work. Moving on to 14.2, discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of conducting a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to the city manager's employment agreement as permitted in CRS 24-6-4024B. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn an executive session.
Just for the record, I would say that this is intended to be a communication between council and myself, so just to be clear that that would be the limit of who would be invited into this session.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips, maybe have her own call, please.
Counselor, I'm sorry, I did not get who made that motion.
I did initially.
Sorry.
I might ask, you know, it's regarding the legal opinion, not anything relative to personnel matters.
Personnel, that's right.
Okay.
We'll admit it to that, yes.
Motion stands.
Okay. Just as a point of, on the 14.1, there was a resolution attached to that. Do we want to approve that resolution for the goal?
Oh, we didn't have a resolution number?
It's 36.
36, okay.
Well, we have an existing motion.
You have it exists?
Do you want us to change?
Can we redo that motion? We want to make this, do this the correct way?
Well, then I think we need to withdraw the current motion and go back and do that one and then come back to this one.
Okay, well, no problem. Really, thank you for noticing that. So the proper way, then, we should have a motion that will include the resolution, the resolution number in it?
Well, I think we have to, I think Dirk said we have to withdraw the current motion.
With the purposes to add the resolution number?
Right, and then go back to the original motion? Is that what Dirk, is that what? Dirk, is that what we're doing?
I'm sorry, I was having a side conversation. Yes, because that, I think, was that motion seconded?
Yes.
We need to withdraw the second, I mean, just for procedure, I think you just withdraw the second, just consent from both to withdraw the motion and withdraw the second and then we'll go back and take that.
Okay, so I'll withdraw the second, you'll withdraw the...
First.
Okay.
That's with regard to the executive session.
Right, right.
And then we'll go.
So that we can go back and approve the resolution.
Right.
And I'll move that we approve the resolution 2019-36 pertaining to the city's goals.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Let's see, we're gonna go with Counselor Bettine, Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Now we'll go on.
Now we go on.
Thank you.
So there was a motion to convene an executive session?
Yep.
For the specifics, issues stated? And I will move to enter, adjourn for executive session.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Thank you.